Good evening. Call this meeting to order. I'd like to call the October fourteenth, twenty nineteen work session to order for the York County School Board. And it's hard to believe we're already in the middle of October and hopefully everyone's back to their school routine and adjusting to new classes and having a great start to the new year. But I do want to mention one thing. We have our chief academic officer is going to be retiring soon, November fifteenth. Is that correct today? She'll be leaving, but...
Yes, right before Thanksgiving.
Right before Thanksgiving. Well, we're certainly going to miss you, but you've already got the retirement smile, I can see. You're already starting to get that. But I just wanted to mention that, that we're certainly going to miss you in there. All right. So we have four presentations this evening, and the first one relates to Munis, but I'm going to turn it all over to Dr. Shandor to start us off with that.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson. Good evening, board members. I would like to request that we add an additional item to the agenda this evening. If we could add a topic related to on-time graduation rate and dropout rate, I was going to have Dr. Guy share our results that were released last week, if that's okay.
Is the board good with that? That additional presentation, just a short presentation?
Okay. So Ms. Ford will add that as topic E, and we'll kick off the first presentation. If that's right, I'll kick it. I'll kick it. How about if I turn it over to Mr. Bowlen, Chief Financial Officer, who's going to provide an update on Munis?
Thank you, Dr. Shandor. Mr. Richardson, members of the board, and Dr. Shandor, thank you for the opportunity to provide you with a brief update on the status of our implementation of the Munis financial and HR payroll system. If you recall, this is a two-phase process. Phase one has already been completed, and that's where we converted our financial system, our old AS400, and converted all that information and data to Munis. That process began in June of two thousand and eighteen, where we opened Munis mid-month, and then we ended up closing a few weeks later. I wouldn't recommend doing that. That was not a happy time, but this past summer, we actually completed our first four full-year fiscal year county and schools with the Munis financial system. And I will say that vast improvements were made during that one year, and I attribute that to ongoing training, collaboration with our partners at the county, and with the support of the FinCIS team at the county. Can't say enough about Ken and Erica and all the support that they provide us. They've been very attentive to our needs, our questions, our concerns, and have been quick to act on any system issues that we've had. So we really appreciate the work that FinCIS does for us. Phase two of the project is our conversion of the HR payroll module to Munis. That process began for schools last month, and we are currently in that process, and that will take us even beyond the scheduled implementation date of January one of two thousand and twenty, this January. So that process, the testing process, involves us running parallel payrolls in our old system and in Munis. And so the idea is to run those parallels and continue running those parallels until the results from both those systems agree. We've only run one parallel to date. We had a number of challenges with that first one, as expected, and so we regrouped as a team, and we're addressing those issues. But again, those parallels will continue even beyond the January one implementation date. And the reason why we're going to run it beyond, because if for some reason the payroll gods don't look favorable upon us come January one, we will be able to revert back to the old system so that we won't have any interruption to payroll. We'll have a communication crafted here shortly that will go out to employees. We'll probably have multiple communications to employees, just reminding them of this conversion, but also to stress the importance for employees to check, verify, review their pay stubs in January. Because while we're going through this conversion, this month, we're also simultaneously going through open enrollment for employee benefits. So we're going to have to incorporate all the changes for the employee benefits simultaneously with the conversion. So it'll be quite challenging for us, but we have a number of folks that are assigned to the team to make sure that everything goes on, goes through without a hitch. So that's the report this evening, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
I just have two. The HR and payroll change, is the county also doing that at the same time their phase number of that? Or have they already done it?
Yes. They're running parallels too. They've only run one payroll also.
Gotcha. And the benefits, that's because our benefits for the healthcare and that sort of thing used to be on a fiscal year, now it's on a physical year.
It's on a calendar year basis.
Calendar year.
Yeah, so our open enrollment prior to that change occurred in June, and now occurs in October for January one change.
Gotcha. Yeah, I just wanted to clarify that for anyone that has questions. Any other questions? All right. Well, thank you so much, Mr. Bowlen, and we appreciate that update on the phase two of the Munis system. So we'll go on to the calendar update.
Yes, thank you, Ms. Richardson. We've, Dr. Aaron Butler, Director of School Administration, was here last month, shared some brief information with you related to the school calendar. He's back this evening to present another update. So I'll turn it over to Dr. Butler.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson, members of the board, and Dr. Shandor. Thank you for this opportunity to provide an update to the two thousand and twenty, two thousand and twenty-one school year calendar. As I shared last month, during the previous legislative session, the Virginia General Assembly did pass legislation allowing all schools in the Commonwealth not previously granted a waiver to start prior to Labor Day holiday of the fourteen days. Our division, along with neighboring school divisions, administered a survey to gather community feedback concerning this matter. We have received over fourteen, I'm sorry, we have received over four thousand eight hundred responses and one thousand five hundred written responses to the survey. And so the division calendar committee will be meeting later this month to carefully review all the responses and the written comments that were made, and then we will also share that information as a group. This is just a starting point. No decisions have been made concerning the two thousand and twenty, two thousand and twenty-one school year calendar. And then the regional calendar committee will be meeting in November to discuss the survey results. So I thank you for this opportunity to share updates on the calendar, and I am available now for questions if you have any.
It's going to be interesting to see where it goes. It's going to be really interesting to see.
Yes. I think it's important that we share this evening that there are no decisions made.
Oh, exactly.
Because I think that sometimes when we present a topic, social media will take on a life of its own, and it doesn't be very clear that there is no decision made as far as the school calendar.
And it's a step-by-step, very thought-out process to this. It's not running real quickly to doing it. What works best in York County.
Right.
I get an awful lot of questions about that just the past couple of weeks. It might be helpful maybe for us, but definitely for the community. If you could just kind of, I don't know who it would be, maybe just talk about the real benefit of doing something like that, the rationale behind it, because those are the questions that I seem to be getting. Can somebody elaborate on that?
Yes, we can. I mean, do you want to share with us?
Yes, sir. No. So when we had previous years with the calendar committee, they were looking at, when we start after Labor Day, if there's any type of inclement weather or other items that happen, it tends to put us in a crunch situation when it comes to the number of instructional days that are missed. And then there was also issues with how our instructional days are broken up over time. So right now, you look at the months of December and November and January, a lot of fragmentation was going on because of the different holidays. And so discussion had been had, if we could somehow be able to start this a little earlier, we could build in some time to compensate for any inclement weather, but also we could kind of spread it out so that we would have enough instructional days clustered to have a maximized student potential. So there were just a couple of different things that the committee had talked through with that.
Some of the other benefits would be if you could finish first semester before the holiday. There's a real benefit to that for our kids to, and families and teachers and staff to get away from it. Another benefit that we discussed was the AP testing and IB testing for when that happens. We have, our students currently do a lot of summer work, especially our AP students, because like Winchester starts about three to four weeks ahead of us. So, but the timeline or time window for when you take the test, you're taking it at the same time. So that's another, you know, something to think about.
I'm listening, if I can, to what Robbie is saying, though, but is it something that, what you just talked about, you did the bullet piece to it, can go out in a call to parents?
Yeah, and I believe...
That kind of, just to set where we are and...
Yeah, correct me if I'm wrong, I believe we shared that information through the survey. So all parents will receive that information. There's numerous bullets. Is that correct, Ms. Goff?
Yes, sir.
So when we sent that information out, and we sent that to the board as well, there's a series of bullets on there that share what some of the benefits are. And again, this was a collaboration between, it wasn't just York County.
Right, right.
It was all the surrounding counties that share New Horizons, which is our regional program. So all of our communication, team members from each of the divisions got together and crafted that communication as well as that survey.
And I think there were some misconceptions from some people I've talked to about if we, say we started early, that it would shorten the time during the summer. Well, it will, would probably if they, if we decided to change for that first year, or just the same difference, if we extended the start of the school year to mid-September, it would mean a longer break during the summer that one year, and then the next year, everything would level out and catch up.
Yeah, and I think this year coming forward, Aaron, Dr. Butler, correct me if I'm wrong, we would be starting at, Labor Day's late.
Right, right. Because of the lateness of Labor Day. See, this year, we started on close, I think, September second, around that time. Next year, Labor Day's on the seventh of September, so it would be pushing us back further into June.
Right. So just a lot of information to consider. Again, I think going through the, you know, all the school divisions have to sift through those comments and find out sort of, you know, where do we stand, because we don't want to miss any issues that are community or families' vacations.
That's great. Thank you.
Sure.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Butler. All right. Thank you, Dr. Butler. And now we're going to move on to our next presentation, and that's our strategic plan, our objective for, it has to do with class size, Objective 5.1, and that's our next agenda item, Dr. Shandor.
Thank you, Ms. Richardson. So Dr. Tony Bledue, Chief Human Resource Officer, he is now going to share this presentation related to class size from the strategic plan, followed up by another presentation that he will be giving on working conditions with strategic plan. So I'll turn it over to Dr. Bledue.
Thank you, Dr. Shandor, Mr. Richardson, and members of the board. In our last work session, I provided a staffing report. Tonight, I'll submit to you a strategic plan update for an objective under Goal Five, operational stewardship. The purpose of this objective is to monitor the board's commitment to smaller class sizes. Information presented tonight will reflect the status of the division as of the ten-day count of students enrolled and attending during that ten-day window. Before I begin, I want to take a few moments to review the class size requirements set forth by the Virginia legislator, legislature to the standards of quality. First, two-four-to-one in kindergarten with no classes being larger than twenty-nine students. If the average daily membership in any kindergarten class exceeds twenty-four pupils, a full-time teacher's age shall be assigned to that class. Second, two-four-to-one in grades one, two, and three, with no class sizes being larger than thirty. And third, two-five-to-one in grades four through six, with no class sizes being larger than thirty-five students. To our strategic goal, the board has committed to maintain class sizes that are much smaller than the state allowable limits. As a result, this year, as in years past, we follow the same class size targets. It's also important to remember that decisions to shift staff members or allot additional resources were made in consultation with principals based on both projected and actual enrollment numbers, and also in relation to parent educator support. As a reminder, these specific class size goals are related to the division's averages, and individual classes may vary. As a board, you recommit to the same class sizes during the strategic plan cycle at the secondary level. It is important to remember that the state has no class size limit for grade seven through twelve. Our division target ratio for secondary core classes is below thirty students pending available resources. The only exception, as per the standards of quality to this limit, is that English class size average is set to twenty-four students. As a point of reference, the chart at the center bottom of this slide summarizes both the YCSD targets and state size class, class size limits. In elementary, we monitor individual grades as well as K-two and three-five averages. In middle and high, we monitor the class sizes and core contents as well, content areas as well as PE. As you can see, we're at or below all division targets in the overwhelming majority of areas. Second grade is, however, point seven-one higher. In looking at this, it's important to take into consideration that principals prefer smaller class sizes in kindergarten and first grade, and these numbers do not represent parent educator or take into account parent educator support. State code requires us to provide data to the board on individual classes. You'll find in your folders the supplemental listing for each classes to include the use of parent educators. Correction, please note that many of these classes also include the use of parent educators, special education teachers, and reading specialists. And as stated earlier, these numbers are monitored monthly and the subject of ongoing conversations with principals.
Are there, can I ask a question? Are there any schools, any classes that we are concerned about? And when I say that, I'm not looking at the average. I'm looking at school by school, class by class. Are there any that are a red flag for us?
And talking to our principals we monitor that monthly, we still have some of our class sizes that our principals are worried to staff those classes, as well as working on additional space. So there is a little bit of movement, and that's being taken into consideration right now, and we're actively working to address those issues. Now I want to take a few moments to share elementary historical class size data. Our start-of-the-year numbers are in line with the last six years, and as a point of comparison, K-two and three-five class averages are within a third of a point across the board from last year. Kindergarten, first grade, and fifth grade are at or below last year's averages. And as I share, only second grade is approximately three-quarter of a point higher across the goal, while fourth and fifth grade fall below the established goals. Another metric that we're diligent about monitoring are the ratios for our Title I schools versus the others. Federal regulations require equal to lower class sizes for the same classes that you see here. We meet the regulated class size relationship. In middle school, you'll find the current numbers in the right column. All content areas are similar to last year. When looking at the individual class level, we have no core classes with thirty students across the four middle schools. This is a reduction of twelve classes with over thirty from last year at the same time. As it relates to our high schools, the most recent class size averages are found in the right column. Here you will see that English and math are lower than last year, and significantly lower than the board and state recommended levels. Science and history classes see slight increases, but are well within the recommended averages. Lastly, there are no core classes at the high school level with thirty or more students. This concludes my report, and I'm now open to take any questions or comments you might have.
The reduction you were saying in the middle school numbers from last year to this year, you said it was like twelve classes or something that was over thirty, and there's none this year?
That's right. We pulled those reports at the ten-day count and monitor any classes that are thirty or greater. So this, last year, we had twelve that were thirty. This year, we have none, so all of the classes are twenty-nine or less, and that's as of the ten-day count.
Is that due to like additional staffing, or has there been a reduction in numbers at the middle school level, or?
These actually, some of our counselors have worked very diligently and make sure we balance those classes. For instance, you might walk into a class and there were twenty-three students, and in another class, you have twenty-five or twenty-seven. So during that master schedule process, there's been a greater collaboration to ensure that we balance those classes out.
Okay, good.
One more, if I may ask. This is class size. Have we looked at classes per high school? And this may be someplace else in another presentation. Looking at the, all the courses that are offered in each of the high schools, so there's similarity across the board for high schools. Bruton used to be that lower population of students, so you might not get all the similar classes. Or if so, they were, you have to have fifteen to make a class, sometimes it was lower than fifteen. Is that data related to this, or is that a whole separate presentation?
Well, it takes into account those averages. I can tell you, having been fresh out of secondary instruction at Bruton, we go below that established limit simply to account that when you have smaller populations, you may have to be a little more flexible with the schedules.
But if you had to compare across the board, the four high schools, they are still getting the diploma that comes out of, that we give at the end is representative of, they could have gotten that any of the four schools.
We make...
The classes that, that's offered.
We work very hard to make sure the same course offerings are available at all of our schools. When we have to make accommodations, we have a robust virtual program that's available. But with the face-to-face component, we work very hard to make sure students have the opportunities at all of our schools.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Bledue, for that presentation. And now we're going to move on to our next agenda item, which is working conditions. Dr. Shandor.
Thank you. So we're going to send it right back to Dr. Bledue. We're going to let him pull up his next presentation, and this is on Goal Three, Objective Three Seven, which is our working conditions. So I'll turn it over to Dr. Bledue.
Thank you, Dr. Shandor, Mr. Richardson, and members of the board. At this time, I'll present the results of the two thousand and nineteen Teacher and Staff Working Conditions Survey. One objective on the Goal Three Staff Support states that the division will evaluate working conditions annually and implement appropriate and targeted improvement plans based on the data collected through working conditions surveys. Before I begin to present the results, I want to provide some additional background. To do their jobs well, educators need supportive school environments where they feel valued, trusted, and empowered to collaborate in order to improve instruction. Prior to the current survey in two thousand and seventeen, YCSD developed and administered a working condition survey modeled on the new teacher centers, Teacher Empowerment, Leading and Learning, or TEL, survey. This is a valid and reliable measure that was already administered in eighteen states and to more than one-point-five million teachers and staff. In the spring of two thousand and nineteen, the Virginia Department of Education implemented a required survey that was similar to the TEL to all teachers and staff. Now I would like to take a few moments to share with you some information about the Virginia Working Condition Survey. The purpose of the survey is to help schools create and maintain positive working conditions for professionals working in Virginia's public schools. The survey can also provide supporting data to evaluate school-level teaching conditions and examine the impact of such conditions on student achievement. Lastly, and also important, it informs the retention of teachers and staff. There are four domains that the Teacher and Staff Working Condition Survey measures. First, professionalism emphasizes staff collegiality, teacher leadership, and autonomy. Second, teaching, instruction, and student support focuses on the academic environment as well as the instructional workspace environment. Third, school and community supports, and school safety, which measures perceptions regarding prevalence of bullying and general school safety. Each time the survey is administered, the results are shared with both division staff and school principals. Additionally, principals are required to share this data with staff and discuss both areas of growth and achievement. For instance, this past spring, VDOE provided individual results to each school. Principals then shared the data with teachers and staff, and during his school improvement presentation, they shared the top five and bottom five. It is a division expectation that principals use this data to inform school improvement. I will now begin sharing the teacher responses to the Virginia Department of Education Working Condition Survey across the four domains. At this time, I want to take a few moments to review the information needed to interpret the data on this chart. First, the survey uses a Likert scale that ranges from one, strongly disagree, to six, strongly agree. For instance, the responses on this chart range from four-point-two to four-point-eight-eight. As such, all responses you are seeing are in the agree range. Also on this chart and throughout the presentation, state responses are represented in gray, Region Two responses are in green, and YCSD responses are in dark blue. As a reminder, Region Two includes fifteen school divisions from the south side to the eastern shore and as far northwest as Williamsburg, James City County. Also, the response scale and key will be used throughout this presentation. Now to the results. Professionalism, which includes three measures. In the area of teacher leadership, teacher autonomy, and collegiality, though there are some variations, YCSD teachers at greater levels of agreement or better working conditions than both the region and the state. Domain Two includes staff responses in the area of teaching, instruction, and teaching support. As shown at the top of each bar, all of the responses in the area range from four-point-six to four-point-eight-four, or the upper scale of the agree range. As you can see, division responses in the area of instructional practice and academic environment are higher than both the region and the state. Instructional and workplace environment responses were one-tenth of a point lower than both the region and the state. On the next slide, we'll take a closer look at this area. To provide greater insight into the instructional workplace environment, on this chart, the elementary responses are represented by gold, middle school by maroon, and high school by dark green bars. As we take a closer look, the data reveal that the responses to two questions receive lower level of agreement. First, my school provides me with sufficient access to appropriate instructional materials. And second, I have the support I need to incorporate technology into instruction. Teachers at all levels responded that they agree in the agree range that their school provides them with sufficient access to instructional materials. However, it is our goal to exceed both the state and regional averages. As you'll remember, the division invested in additional materials such as maker spaces, robotics, and math manipulatives. However, the timing of the survey do not reflect these changes. Also, as it relates to support needed to incorporate technology into instruction, Dr. Karen Cagle has collaborated with building leaders to rewrite the job descriptions for the instructional innovation coaches, formerly known as ATFs. Resetting expectations and providing professional development in this area was not done at the time the survey was administered. It is clear that we need to hear directly from our teachers, and we will involve them to identify additional support in these areas. Domain Three is related to school and community supports. This was the largest category on the survey, and the data presented will be shown on two separate charts. In the area of school leadership, YCSD is above both the state and regional average. However, in the area of teacher evaluation, we fell below the state and the region by approximately one-tenth of a point. Lastly, as it relates to professional development, YCSD had lower levels of agreement by approximately one-tenth of a point. As I just shared, YCSD teachers reported lower levels of agreement that teacher evaluations are effective. There were total of three questions in this area related to objectivity, feedback, and consistency of procedures. In this regard, beginning back at Leadership Academy, the Human Resource Department has analyzed three years of evaluation data and is providing training to principals and assistant principals on performance management, feedback, the use of metrics, documentation, accountability, and leadership practices. Our department will collaborate with appropriate directors and principals to monitor progress and provide the support needed. Lastly, while elementary PD was above, or professional development was above the regional and state average, middle and high school professional development fell below both of these benchmarks. A closer look at this area revealed that teacher responses on two questions accounted for the difference in the level of agreement. First, professional development is differentiated to meet individual or the individual needs of teachers. And second, follow-up is provided after professional development activities to give teachers additional support. It is important to... It is important to remember that the majority of professional development is site-based. We're involving principals and teacher leaders with SBO support to develop plans to address these needs. Three additional measures in Domain Two, Three include demand on teacher's time, managing student behavior, and relationships with parents and guardians. As it relates to demands on teacher's time, YCSD was approximately 1/20th of a point lower than the regional average. However, in the area of managing student behavior and relationships with parents and guardians, the division is at or above the regional average. So as you saw on the previous slide, the division responses to the question related to demands on teacher's time was slightly below the regional average. So there are four questions in this area. These questions related to class size, time to collaborate, and instructional time. In these three areas that I just mentioned, we're above or at the regional average. However, when we looked at the availability of non-instructional time, that's what accounted for the difference when we dove into that data. The responses also mirror the daily schedules at each respective level. For instance, both high school and middle school teachers have approximately the same amount of planning time, or 90 minutes every other day. At the elementary level, teachers have approximately 35 to 40 minutes of planning. And while this is not significant in the difference between state and regional averages, we're involving leaders with SBO support to solicit additional feedback from teachers to address this area. Domain Four responses related to school safety. First, as you can see, teacher responses range from 4-agree to 5, or somewhat agreed to 5-agree. Though there are slight variations between the region and the state, YCSD teachers had a great level, greater level of agreement that adequate security, respect is available than both the state and regional averages. In other words, as we looked at these questions, YCSD teachers feel more safe, respected, and secure while at school. Now to teacher perceptions of prevalence to bullying. On this chart, a lower number shows that there is more disagreement of prevalence of bullying. As you can see, all the responses were in the somewhat disagree range. In other words, a lower number is better. In this area, YCSD teachers reported a lower prevalence of bullying than both the state and the region. We recognize, however, that student safety is our top priority, and as Dr. Aaron Butler has shared at the June work session, the Department of School Administration has made this area a top priority by leading several initiatives to improve performance in this area. The last measure before the presentation of staff responses are the teacher responses to the question, "My school is a good place to work and learn." In this area, though the state and regional data was not available, staff responses are at the agree level with small variations between elementary, middle, and high school. We're proud of this measure, and we will continue to strive for all YCSD schools to be great places to work and learn. Before I move to the presentation of staff results and the next steps, do you have any questions or comments about the teacher data?
Just, I don't know if you said it wrong. What was the percentage of surveyors based on the overall teacher?
So we had 789 teachers that responded, that approximately 984. So it was a very high response rate.
And there's another slide you're going to get to.
That was another question, too.
So while the previous slides were about teacher responses to the working conditions, over the next few slides, I want to share the staff responses. As a point of reference, VDOE defines staff as those whose primary job or responsibility is not directly interacting with students in the classroom setting. Some of these positions include administrators, counselors, parent educators, subject area specialists, nurses, psychologists, SROs, library media specialists, and social workers. As it relates to Domain One, all of the responses were in the 5.0 to 5.1 range of the agreement level on the Likert scale. Most importantly, all the responses related to Domain One or professionalism were higher than the state and Region Two. Now to Domain Two, teaching, instruction, and student support. As you can see, in the areas of academic expectations and instructional workplace environment, YCSD staff reported higher levels of agreement or better working conditions than both the region and the state. Now to Domain Three, school and community supports. There are five indicators in this domain: school leadership, staff evaluation, professional development, managing student behavior, and relationships with parents and guardians. Tonight, I'm pleased to share that in all areas, YCSD staff met or exceeded higher levels of agreement than both the state and Region Two. As it relates to school safety, similar to the teacher responses, YCSD staff have higher levels of agreement than both the state and Region Two. This means that our staff feel more safe, respected, and secure than the regional and state average as reported on the survey. On this slide, you're looking at staff perception of prevalence of bullying. Also, a lower number indicates more disagreement to the prevalence of bullying. In other words, a lower number is better. As a division, there's less agreement that prevalence of bullying exists when compared with both the region and the state. However, as I previously shared, during the teacher responses, safety is our top priority. As such, we'll continue to monitor progress and improve performance in this area. One of the questions staff responded to was, "My school is a good place to work and learn." Again, there was no state or regional data. In this regard, staff responded in the range of agree to strongly agree. So this slide provides information on both teacher and staff immediate professional plans. In this regard, there were total 789 teachers that took the survey and indicated their immediate plans. 703, or 89% of teachers represented by the dark blue, shared that they plan to continue to teach in their current school or the school division. 27, or 3%, represented by the green slice, shared that they plan to move, while 59, or approximately 8%, of teachers represented in gray, shared that they have plans to retire or leave education. Now to the staff immediate professional plans. Out of the 100 in staff that completed the survey, 129, or 92%, reported that they plan to continue to work at their current school or stay in the school division. Five staff members, or 4%, planned to move out of the area, while six planned to retire or leave education. We're proud of the work our principal and school leaders have done in this area, and we strive to continue to provide great working conditions for all of our employees. I want to thank you for the opportunity to present the Teacher and Staff Working Condition Survey. At this time, I'm ready for your questions and comments.
Just the numbers again. So how many licensed staff? 789 was the total?
The staff, we had a much lower response rate on the staff.
Yeah, but what's the total number of teachers?
Out of 900.
Oh, 984 is the last number I have.
And then the, the staff, 140 out of how many?
We have close to over in the mid-300s, but I have to provide you that specific data. We know the response rate was much lower for our staff than the teachers.
I think it's happened in the past, I guess. Trying to figure out a way to get the, more folks to participate in the survey. Whether it's opportunity, access to technology, whatever it might be, to get them in front of whatever device or-
So in 2017, when we rolled, when Dr. Carroll rolled the first one out, when we got out in front of the state before this, we held staff sort of hostage, right? Dr. Carroll.
You want to use those words?
Well, we did. We really wanted-
Well, we still do. We want that feedback. So that was a strategy that, when Dr. Carroll was in HR, that we walked them through, right?
And I think we had some difficulty, you always have some difficulty with staff because of itinerant staff that are moving from building to building, holding them accountable for that. Also, the state, communication from the state on the status of parent educators taking this one or not was muddled at best. So we had some miscommunication there. We also did a non-licensed working conditions, a survey that Dr. Wadu will be reporting out in the next couple of months, and we know we captured parent educators on that one. And that was designed for them specifically. They had a group and questions just for them. So hopefully, we'll have a higher number there.
No more questions. Thank you, Dr. Wadu, for his presentations. Appreciate that. And now we have our last presentation, our Item E.
Item E. So we're going to turn it over to Dr. Guy, Chief Academic Officer, and she is going to briefly report on on-time graduation rates and dropout rates, which were released last week. Dr. Guy.
Thank you, Dr. Shandor. Good evening, Mr. Richardson, members of the board. At this time, I'll provide an update on the on-time graduation and dropout rates for the division for the graduating class of 2019. This data was publicly released by the Virginia Department of Education last Tuesday, October 8th. On-time graduation rates include students who earn diplomas within four years of the first time they enter ninth grade, and it includes advanced studies, standard diploma, modified standard, applied studies, and general achievement diplomas. I'm pleased to share that the 2019 graduating class had the highest on-time graduation rate, 97%, for the division in five years, significantly exceeding the state average. Additionally, all five high schools had on-time graduation rates in the 90s, ranging from 92.9% to 98.6%. And all four of our traditional high schools demonstrated growth over the past five years as highlighted in the, in green in the last column. Our success in improving on-time graduation and reducing dropout rates is largely based on building personal connections with students, along with early identification of who is at risk in implementing appropriate individualized strategies to ensure success. Over the past five years, YCSD demonstrated growth for six of eight subgroups, with the most notable growth for black students, 8.4 percentage point growth, and students with disabilities, 11.6 percentage points growth. As you can see, all but two subgroups are in the 90s. And the on-time graduation rate for our black students exceeds the on-time graduation rate for all students and all other subgroups. Although the on-time graduation rate for English learners declined, this is a very small population, which means there's greater variability from year to year. Sorry. Moving from on-time graduation to dropout rates, this slide illustrates the improvement in our dropout rates over the past five years, with all four traditional high schools demonstrating reductions as highlighted in the last column. However, the most notable reduction in dropout rates is York High, with a dropout rate of less than 1%. York High School has also shown the greatest reduction over the past five years from 3.5 percentage, excuse me, from 3.5% in 2015 to 0.8% in FY19. In terms of our subgroup performance, students who identify as two or more races and black students had the lowest dropout rates as compared to all students and other subgroups, 1.2% and 1.6%, respectively. As an aside, two or more races does not become a measure for accountability purposes until the 2020 graduating class. Additionally, every subgroup but one saw reductions in the dropout rate over the past five years, with black students and students with disabilities demonstrating the greatest improvement, with reductions of 5.7 and 5.9 percentage points, respectively. While we have much to be proud of, the on-time graduation and dropout rates for our economically disadvantaged students are not where we want it to be. As I shared in the first slide, our success in improving on-time graduation and reducing dropout rates is largely based on building those personal connections with students, along with early identification of who is at risk and implementing those appropriate individualized strategies. We will continue to fine-tune this strategy to look more closely at this specific population to reduce the gap that currently exists. This concludes my presentation. At this time, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Ending on a high note. I like it.
Is this something that will become a part of Board Docs?
Yes, it will be.
Okay.
Yes. I just didn't put it up there today because I knew that we were going to add it or try to add it to the agenda, so I will add that.
All right. Well, thank you for that information, Dr. Guy. We appreciate it. And that's our last presentation for the evening, so that makes it for a quick, or short evening, actually. So I appreciate all the updates provided, the board this evening, to the board this evening. And as a reminder, we'll be back on Monday, October 28th at 7:00 p.m. for our regular school board meeting. So everyone, have a great week. Thank you. Thank you.